Oh my god, team, I'm supposed to be down there.
You can still come if you want, Beth.
Can I? Is that alright? Alright, I'll be right there.
Robin's on, Robin Howard. So I wanted to actually go ahead and call her and see if I could test audio.
Your audio sounds good, Kevin.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Ms. Brett. That's great, I have this Logitech speaker hooked up. So, the only thing is, it's the audio and the video connected, so I was... Let's see, now you lost, we lost the video, but maybe it'll go back to us. Well, you were a second ago, but I just pulled out the camera. Camilla, can you hear us still?
Yeah, I can hear you. Did you turn the video off?
I just grabbed, I grabbed one of the cameras out, yeah, so...
Oh, it works okay if you just use the built-in camera, that's what we use for all of our AP meetings.
Right, yeah, I was hoping to get a little bit of a better audio quality by using a mix, the camera from the computer and the audio from the Logitech.
Are you using the little two blue speakers that are already attached?
No, I'm using the Logitech, Mary has a little old thing in front of her computer. That is a good mic.
Yeah, I got you. No, the little blue ones that are already hooked up work A-OK, I mean, we've been using them all year.
Yeah, okay.
With the built-in camera.
With the built-in camera, okay, I'm gonna go back to that for today and I'll test this at a different point, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you know they have armed guards?
Oh, come on.
Absolutely. They have Boston police officers and oftentimes they are vetted, their vehicles and they park in an unknown place.
I think if you back up just a little bit, we'll be able to see everybody.
Yeah, I just, I just, yep, thank you.
Yep.
Kevin, whatever you do, don't try to make a light so big.
We are, no, so, Ms. Brett, can you hear us okay now?
Yep, and I can see, I think, everybody, as long as you don't sit on Tony's side.
Yes, yeah, alright.
Madam Chair, would you do a test?
Yep, can you hear me okay, Ms. Brett?
Yep, it sounds good.
So the only thing I did notice was that we had to talk towards the computer, which you're all facing, so...
Thank you, Carol.
Yeah, anyone have any ideas, if you have a problem here, answer it first, if you feel free to put in the chat.
Can you check the chat?
Yep, yeah, I was gonna, maybe the check jockey up here.
Are you gonna sit up there?
Yep.
Off camera?
Off camera until my report is time. No slide over here.
Nope, nope. May not make faces nor hand gestures.
Alright, so I'm gonna call the meeting for April 26, 2022, order up suddenly, yeah.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sounds so much better together. We were always singing on that. Oh, I don't know.
With the choral, so 100 people singing.
I don't even know, it's amazing. So, our first order of business, I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from April 12, 2022. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the meeting of April 12, 2022. Thank you, Ms. Reala. All in favor of approving the minutes as written? Ms. Carol, do we just say aye? Yes, okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for everybody's joining the meeting this evening by video, their first in-person meeting. Thank you, and people are welcome to come down to the school and join us in person, and we're happy to have people join remotely as well. I'll take a moment to welcome any community correspondence from the members, from the non-members that are joining the meeting today, and I'll ask the members of the committee to share any community correspondence that they have some thoughts about. I did have some, not like directly a school committee, but sort of indirect communication in regards to, you know, just somebody in the community reflecting that they were interested that we didn't re-implement the mask policy with the uptick of, I think, you know, most little COVID cases. And so, I felt like it was somewhat addressed as a member of the school committee in that way, even though, you know, she didn't approach, it was more in conversation and passing. So, I just let them know and, you know, I think it's important for community members to know that, you know, students are welcome to wear masks, you know, whenever they or their families choose to have them do that. So, that was certainly in conversation. Mr. Andrews, this is our meeting.
I don't see anybody in the chat.
Right, we'll move on to the examination authorization for the payment of bills, which we were able to review in person this evening, and also the summary of the bills are in our packet. Mr. Perry, would you like to walk us through the bill roll for this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair, this evening, the total bill rolls is $25,323.23. As the very typical, it's a light month, materials, educational materials, maintenance materials, a couple of payments for out-of-district skilled education. We also have payments to individuals, which are reimbursements. To one person is a reimbursement for a CPR license, and to Mr. Andrews, it was a reimbursement to pay him back for using his credit card for materials. $184.80, and that's it. So, Madam Chair, with your permission, I would respectfully ask a member of this committee to make a motion to approve $25,323.23.
I'll make a motion to approve $25,323.23 for the bill roll in our packet. Motion? All in favor of approving the motion as written? Aye, everyone say aye. Motion carries? Welcome, welcome in person.
Welcome.
Take a breath.
The irony, I'm the one that pushed this last. I left and my wife was like, "You sure they need you?"
Yes.
Not sure you're...
So we have members joining us.
Yep, we have Ms. Brett and, let's see, Ms. Howard online, two staff members.
Nice to see everybody. I can't see them.
No, I just, I went for the, you have the little version and then, then you can see yourself really nicely.
I know it is.
It's like we're on the view.
You just need the pocket covers. We can move on to the superintendent's report. So it looks like our superintendent's report is open sometime tomorrow, or are you going to say something first?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to explain, last meeting, the school committee deliberated on the agenda and reverted to the policy agenda. However, I thought that rather than just putting the superintendent's report, I would detail it so the members of the committee and the public would know exactly under my report what was going to be covered. So, I incorporated the principal's report as far as the superintendent's report, because the principal's report evidently wasn't in the policy and we would have had to change the policy. Why would we do that?
That works well.
Okay, so, Madam Chair, with your permission, I would defer to the principal of the Johnson Elementary School. He is here, oh.
Am I right on the edge of the camera?
You got a little bit of a chance to you.
Yes.
Do you want to switch?
No, 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 I'll just, I'll just go like this for a second. And then I'll go back. Thank you, though. Okay, well, thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to share my report this evening. I believe you have a copy in your packet. We have a lengthy report for this evening, under the category of teaching and learning. I want to let you know that our skills club is well underway. This is an opportunity for students to practice their skills in math, ELA, or other areas as teachers deem appropriate on Tuesday and Thursday afternoons. Ms. Billy has stepped up to the plate and is running that until 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And students are bringing their Chromebooks down, having a snack, and then getting intense, you know, 35 minutes of quiet time to do their reading, maybe they just read a book. If they have to read a chapter book, they can have that time. Then when they get home, they'll be done with that assignment. So, that's been wonderful and a good way to target students who need a targeted skill in ELA, a targeted skill in math, on IXL, and teachers can highlight the skill that they are practicing on. I also want to let you know that we're looking at adopting handwriting without tears. And this is a program that was developed by an occupational therapist, and it's a writing program, it's where students learn how to properly form letters. We've used that as an intervention in K1 and 2, and preschoolers has used it. Our occupational therapist, Kathy Durland, is very familiar with it. And we don't currently have something that isn't intensive as, or as prescriptive, I think, as this program is. What it does is it instructs students on how to actually form a letter, how to do handwriting in grade 3 and 4, and handwriting has actually been recognized as a good way for students to learn everything. They, by writing, they learn the content. Handwriting without tears uses pencils, it uses chalkboards and chalk in lower grades, because that also gives feedback to students, it gives more feedback to them. And I think it's a great program, I'm familiar with it myself, we get books at home. And I've seen the program, they had workbooks for students, and I think it's gonna be a great asset to the school. So, we're hoping to have that start in September, and we're looking at it right now. I also want to let you know over break, I was able to go to a workshop on formative assessment in the classroom. We're speaking about how to really improve student performance. And formative assessment is where you, during a lesson, quickly do a quick dip on, who understands what we just said. And you use quiet hand signals, you use clickers, you use exit tickets for students to give you quick feedback. It's not, it's not an end-of-the-unit test, it's not a spelling quiz, it's a quick. Boom, here's what I understood from what we learned today. And then the teacher can, in that moment or later in the day, reevaluate, see where everybody is. And so, it's formative assessment, it's a great two-hour webinar that I took in live action online with folks, and it was run by the DSC, and it was helped me and I shared with the above the staff today.
What was the outfit that did the workshop?
Oh gee, I had a picture of it on my inside profile, I brought it. I'll share it with you, I'll share it with you. I really enjoyed it, I thought they were great folks, and there were only about eight of us on the call, so it was nice because I got a lot of time to interact with folks. We're in the process of doing our social studies textbook review, and that is with Ms. Anderson here, a member of the school committee, as well as with third-grade teacher Erin Morton, and with Kobe, our sixth-grade teacher. We're starting with Open Social Studies, which is an inquiry-based program designed by UMass and BU and DESE and Boston Public Schools. And so, this is, actually, it's a free program. It's hard, we can make it hard copy, and it actually is really, we're really excited about it as a first look. We're also gonna look at the traditional textbook companies, hardcore, things like that. But from what we've seen so far, this program's exciting, because it's based in Massachusetts. It's written by educators and, you know, academics. But we are gonna do a full review and we'll present to you through the regular textbook adoption program that we have with the committee.
Again, so when I first saw, so I've only done it at first glance as well, May 11, of course, like, I will, you know, bow down to whatever the teachers think, because they, you know, they are the experts. But I was impressed at the one that you sent, that I think in these politicized times, it's hard to do a balanced and holistic telling of like something like the American Revolution or colonial times, right? And from the definition of colonialism, what happened coming over, the freedom being sought, the justice decision of the slavery of African folks. I, they really are carving a nice balance with a holistic point of view in that curriculum. So, I, that's something that I'm, I am interested in personally, and I think is the right way to go for schools. And I was, I was happily impressed with what I began to see, again, at just a first glance, so I've not done it justice.
Right, and I would mirror that, and I noticed that they were right away taking the, just the viewpoint of everybody.
Right.
Involved, you know, people who are here who weren't here before, you know, and just letting kids think about, you know, those things.
Right. That's great.
Great, well, thank you for being part of that search process, I really appreciate your presentation.
That's exciting. My, my wife is, was a social studies teacher, definitely pressing her into service, right? So, I may be ghost looking at it or behind the scenes, but I did, my first view, I did that, so it's interesting.
Great. On May 12th, we have our Climate Change Challenge, which is a science fair that the great students in grades 3 to 6 will participate in. You probably saw some plants coming in, that's part of it. Each grade is taking, in grades 3 to 6, is taking a different theme, either food, shelter, or transportation, and how those things impact climate change. And they all have the same topic to make it easy to attack it and help the teachers kind of focus on what the research will be. And then on the 14th, they'll also have the opportunity to share it at East Point, it's a Saturday, where students will be doing dance, art, and culture of what East Point, and they'll have the opportunity to share their projects there, as well as on Thursday, May 12th. I also want to provide you with an update on the Heritage Trail Enhancement Project. I want to let you know that it's going to be in the town warrant book. However, the FinCom did vote to not recommend the project. The, and just a little background on how it all went through. This year, what I did was I started with a one-year proposal to the Community Preservation Committee. That was a $25,000 proposal to include planning and installation. The CPC felt it would be better if I did, if we had it split in two years, with planning and then installation in the second year. So I took their advice and also thought, some folks thought it would be more expensive than I originally expected. I'm not a landscape designer, so I just, you know, went forward and, you know, I thought I would add some funds to make sure we covered everything. However, when I went to the FinCom, the FinCom wanted to see installation in the first year and not just a one-year request for funds for design work. So, it's interesting, CPC has a two-year process, where you can do a two, or three, or four-year process. But then the FinCom will recommend what they're gonna allot in the first year. And so, it's still gonna be in the warrant book, people can vote on it. I'm not sure what the history is of how these things have gone forward. You see, it'll be in the warrant book, but the FinCom will be not recommending the project, because in the first year did not, as, as I designed it after input from CPC, did not include installation, because we thought, I mean, CPC thought we should take a little time, we need someone that professional to design it first and then do the second year. They were also looking at their funding for this year, and they wanted to spread it out a little bit. So, based on that, kind of back and forth, that's where we are right now. So...
So, at the town meeting, it would be voted upon this year's allotment? But I don't really understand how the breaks down.
Yeah, so, the CPC does, clearly have a multi-year application process, which is what I'm using. And, but they only ask for the funds year to year. So, I believe in this coming year, they'll, in the, in the warrant book, it'll be the first year of the project, which is just a planning year.
Is there money for that? Like, did we get the $25,000 for the planning year?
Nothing has gotten until it's voted on at town meeting.
And so, and the finance committee is saying it's not a priority for us right now. Do you do anything, or they just don't like the fact that, they want you to just do a, let's just roll it out?
Was it the total amount, or it was the fact that it was done in a half year?
Yeah, it was the fact that, in the first year, it didn't include installation.
I wonder, I wonder, this is literally me wondering, if part of their concern is if we approve, if the town approves funding for planning one year, there's a possibility at the next town meeting that the town will not approve installation, and that we need for design, and we don't have the ability to implement.
Exactly.
So, that would be the risk, I would imagine.
Yeah.
But it looks, but then what is the second, the second proposal was for 40 grand over two years.
Right.
Planning and install, which means that we would have the money for installation for the second year.
But they only allot the funds for the first year.
Who?
The town, the town, the finance committee. Yeah, the town at the town.
Oh, sorry.
At town.
At town meeting.
Yeah.
So, who's, who's not recommending it? I'm sorry to be late. The finance committee is not recommending it because they want... Yes.
Yeah.
But... So what are they saying? Are they saying, we want you to come with a proposal?
That includes a so, it's too late.
Is that a huge change?
Yeah, it's too late, you can't change the warrant at this point.
And what does the warrant say we're voting on?
On the design first year, design plans for year one. It's too late to change in any way, so if we were to try to change it to be a...
Right.
It's too late at this point. Down this year, we'd have to wait until next year, and then potentially change the warning if we, if you so choose in the warrant. It could still be approved at the town meeting.
The plan year. Did somebody in architecture firm say that we have to spend a year planning this?
That was the recommendations of the CPC.
Okay.
I just want to understand, because we'll be at the meeting, so we can...
Right, and, you know, it was nice, Tony Barletta let me know over break, how, you know, with the outcome once, and I had to really kind of get some clarification about how it all, the logistics that you just discussed, because it, you know, it's different if you're not in the city, if you're in a city, it's different than if you're in a town. We have to wait till all the residents say what they want for this year. And, you know, I'm happy to have raised the flag about the topic and raised the flag about the design. You know, my main job is to staff the school and to design curriculum and instruction, and I'm more than happy to focus on that and let folks know, hey, what do you think about this idea in the future? We have a laid-out plan. We're going, I want to let you know next steps. We will be able to do the educational piece, which is the signage that I had included, because it was actually a nice idea of a way to get signage funded for the forest playground, that would identify plants and how you can use them, things like that. That's still gonna happen regardless, because we have, we have museum activity and school funds for that, with the garden club. So the garden club will be involved with that, and I'll be involved with that. So that'll be the really, you know, the icing on that, that was my original, you know, start of the whole project. And I think it'd be great to have a stone path, but we can't really find the heritage trail from the woods to the school. So if someone else in the community is better outfitted in the following year, if it might could pass at town meeting. I don't know how those things go through when there isn't support from FinCom.
I think there is still the possibility that citizens vote for it.
Yes.
You know, basically someone gets up to the podium and explains why the design was, you know, proposed in this fashion. It's possible that those who are there to vote say, I think that sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, I'm trying to understand, like, why would it be want this? Like, who's gonna get up and say, and make the arguing point against, I mean, love the little trail for kids to go on the way to school?
There is a chance that the next year's citizens of the town would say, you know, we're underwater with infrastructure needs and our budget is really, really tight, it's not the time for us to invest this amount in this trail. There's a chance of that, and so, then we've invested this money, and now we have a little bit of a breakage point between that estimate and when we go to install it.
Because we haven't raised the install money, is that the...
That's right, that won't be approved in this year.
Yeah. Madam Chair, if I may, as a former finance committee chair in a different town, finance committees typically do not like step-by-step finance. Uh finance committees typically do not like step-by-step financing. So for example, let me give you a concrete example, if a new school was required. Uh a finance committee would never approve. Year one, a million dollars for the architect, year two, a million dollars. They want to see the total amount. And then work backwards. That's the typical feeling for all the the reasons that. Um number of the committee um just mentioned. That estimates are estimates, numbers can change. And that's why, you know, for example, when you do build a public building, the first thing we that's approved is the total cost of the building. I'm sure the finance committee would have liked to have seen a proposal for sixty-five thousand dollars. Twenty-five thousand dollars for planning, forty thousand dollars for installation. Uh from this these CPC's perspective. That would have used up sixty-five thousand dollars of their funds, which they probably tried to spread out a little bit more.
Exactly, that's exactly what happened.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the CPC doesn't want to release that much money, and the finance committee doesn't want to. Doesn't want to approve something that's not a total project, which is gonna be one.
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, this is slightly mirroring, I think, our state legislature. Right, I'm sorry, I I just like, we just wanted a damn trail. Like, so is there another way?
But there's no port factor on this one.
There's no, no, that's true, not in the hot, I don't think, but I just, is there another way through this? Like, if you go to the next town, you have different proposals, do a little lobbying, maybe explain this project, show pictures of kids, why we got a new trail. And see if we can, you know, get this through, and yes, it's about to be on your scope, I appreciate that, like, this is.
I was just, I I appreciate so much.
It feels like we've got a little more support here.
No, yeah, no, it's just, you know, I'm, you know, it's, you know, it's it's passion for me, so, you know, it's in some area of interest.
I thought it was health interest, yeah.
And so, um, you know, I'm happy to have floated it, and I have a, you know, plan that people could rerun again, if it doesn't pass.
We'll see.
We'll see.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have you ever had to speak at town meeting yet?
Oh, yes.
Great. Good. All right.
Great, well, thank you, that concludes my uh report, I have dates below about upcoming events. Um I mentioned most of them already, oh, and I do want to mention though, I want to highlight one event. Which is Thursday, June ninth, we're gonna be having a Spring Folk Concert. So we will invite the public, and it'll be at eight-thirty on a Thursday, on June ninth, as the week before school gets out. And Ms. Walsh will be orchestrating that. Uh no, we're waiting. Yeah. Uh so it's the week, it's during the week before school gets out. Um and um and we decided we can sing again. Which was, uh, you know, what we were scripted from last year. Um and it it may, it may, it may be in a cafeteria, it may actually be outside. We have some nice natural uh amphitheaters outside that we can sit against. Uh and so we're looking at some off, in different possibilities. And how we invite guests, and how many guests we have, and so forth, for folks to feel comfortable and safe. But we're glad to have, you know, people in the building and a community event that'll celebrate students' work. And then you have your other days below that, and I'm happy to take any questions if they're not, um we can do that.
It has been really nice to be back in the building, Jean and I were history readers over the last month for the kindergarten class. And it was so much fun, I would have said, I do.
Mr. Chair, thank you for joining to the facilities.
I would love to, thank you, Madam Chair, uh the facility's in good shape. Um we are eagerly awaiting the beginning of the fan project in the cafeteria. Uh and we do have a project going on right now, that's uh been delayed because of material. Which I will discuss with the school committee in executive session. But other than that, we're we're in good shape, the weather stripping is uh in good shape, and the added insulation that we've done. Uh the one thing I do want to say is, at this point, I have not seen the electric decrease in the bill that I thought I would. The um the decrease is running eight to twelve percent. Uh one of the problems, I think, it is the gym. Um Mr. Andrews and I took a note that the gym lights were on a lot, even when the gym was empty. So over vacation, I asked the the electrical engineer come back and to desensitize the sensors twice. First time he did it, and then I came in and um last Wednesday worked, and I noticed uh the lights on. Or it was in there. It was windy. And the doors may have been moving enough, so he came back, and so far, they're working as they should be. Obviously, when those gym lights go on, when no one's in the room, that's a huge amount of electricity relative to a typical room. So that may be the issue. Uh I did ask the staff today how happy they were with the LED lighting, and every one of them universally said, you know, everything's working good. Um when you go out of a room in a certain number of minutes, somewhere around ten, the lights dim, and then they go off. When you re-enter, uh it's interesting how how it works. They they flash, they go up, then they go down, and then they seek the level of light. That is necessary. Uh based on the way coming into the room from a natural source. So it's really an intricate um system. When you look at the lights, there's no bulbs. They have a series of the little crease, the little yellow squares that you see like in a flashlight. And there's, it's gonna be weird, there's like two rows of a hundred of them. On what looks like uh plastic. I mean, it really looks flimsy, but they're shock resistant of. You know, if anyone, uh one thing I learned is if you had an outdoor. Lamp post. And you had a light bulb in it, and the light bulb would rattle and and go out, if you put an LED light bulb in. It it will withstand the wind. Yeah. It's really, I mean, this stuff is amazing. Uh I'm sure many people know, but the inventor of this stuff won the Nobel Prize, so uh pretty impressive. Uh we have submitted the second round for the rest of the building. And that went in on Thursday of last week. I heard from the consultant. So we're in good shape. Um. Madam Chair, I'll go right to personnel, it's okay with you. Uh we're in good shape uh for the school year, uh we have some summer issues. Um first of all, um. The uh speech and language pathologist that I hired uh has sent me an email last week, told me that. Due to personal reasons, she could not take the job. Um even though we we had an agreement, uh and it is a valid reason. So uh we're still looking for a speech and language therapist, we're still looking for an OT. And I have half a nurse. Uh one nurse has agreed to work two of the four weeks, so we're still looking for a nurse. Um and hopefully, um. Mary Mary D'Ority and I are working on that, so we should be in good shape. Uh all the teaching positions and paraprofessional positions are filled. And so we're just looking for the nurse and the two special education positions. I'm I'm pleased to uh tell you that uh moving down to contracts. That the uh chair has signed along with three other people from the town, the Healy Extension. And the reason that that is important to to you and to us and to the town. Is that the last year of the contract fee is the fee that will be charged to the school district for the next two years. Uh each. So there would be no increase in the Healy bus cost to bus our children and young adults to Swanscott for three years. So that's that's uh one of the reasons you go for an extension, is to save some funds. And then the last thing on my report will be the COVID nineteen report, which unfortunately is a little troubling for the first time in. Two and a half months. Uh in the town of Nahat, there are currently uh twenty-eight active, uh excuse me. Fifteen active cases, fourteen have occurred since Thursday of last week. So uh in the entire month of April, in the town of Nahat, there are only twenty-eight cases of confirmed by the PCR test. And fifteen, fourteen happened since Thursday. So we are having a vacation bump, just like we have every vacation. Um. We had some cases the week before vacation, and I sent a letter out. Uh as of today, there are four active, uh six active cases. And a letter will be going out again tomorrow. Uh detailing uh the condition that we are, we are in. Since the eleventh of April, we have had eight cases. And we believe that for the first time, we have had some uh in-school transmissions. Uh that's rough. And it was probably uh not surprising to anyone. Uh the transmission is a little. Focused on our youngest students, pre-K K. Although we have one case and another, two cases, one in each of two other grades. And uh obviously, I want to thank again the public health nurse, uh De Murphy, and our old school nurse for. Um Sheryl Delicio for doing a phenomenal job. Um today, we dove into the preschool. Uh students to see if there was a pattern. Um as you know, we have students go five days a week. We have students go Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have students who only go Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And there was no pattern. Uh it wasn't like, you know.
This cohort.
Yeah, this cohort, like, it's the Tuesday, Thursday cohort.
But this is because they're poor, they take the vaccinated, is that?
Yes, they are not, they are not vaccinated, they are now on masks, uh although I think. Two of the students are in preschool, we're still wearing masks.
Oh, yes, sure, yeah, certainly, um it regularly is, it's two or four, yeah. Yeah.
Depending on the day.
Yeah.
So um that gives you an update, in your packet, you see the graph. Um although it is somewhat troubling that after weeks of no- nothing, we had the bump on the the week of April eleven, but it's coming back down. So, you know. Um what I'm going to do is I crafted the letter today, and uh Mr. Andrews and and Mrs. Alicia are gonna review it and edit it tomorrow. We're gonna try to hold off until we get the um PCR results from our pool testing, which happened today. I don't want to send a letter out, and then, you know, seven hours later, get either real good or real bad news. So um. One of the things I'm asking in the letter is for parents to be vigilant at home. And not to send their children to school and keep them at home if they are um not feeling well. Um. The public health nurse believes that the number of cases in Nahat is much higher than twenty-eight. And the reason is, um of course, I hung testing. Um you know, it's that two-edged sword, it's good to know, but we have no way of requiring reporting, we ask our parents and. Um it's my opinion, our parents and guardians are very good about reporting, but. You know, there may be a whole bunch of uh. Individuals out there who have tested positive or are staying home, uh hopefully. But we wouldn't know it, and the the public health department would know it. So that's where we are.
The other take, um that's true, I know going before the COVID.
Yes.
I mean, I feel like we're so focused on COVID, but, you know, with kids having worn masks for so long, and then unmasking and not being. Due to immune systems, there's a lot of flu going on, so, you know, even, I feel like too often, people are getting caught in the. Well, I tested it, it's not COVID, so, but it could be, you know, something else, so the take for messages, if your child is sick, they should just, you know, stay home until they need a criteria to come back to school.
Absolutely, you know, we did, we did have, we did have quite a few number of viral flu cases. And it was very different. Uh some of it was in, you know, headaches, some of it was in the chest, some of it was body aches, there was no consistency to it. And you're absolutely right, the message won't be if you think your child has COVID.
Yeah.
Stay home, it will be if your child is not well. Keep them home. Until they're sent to free.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, the the only other thing I'll add is that from talking to the shareholders, and I don't know what you've been hearing, but I I hear that we're already sort of. Coming on down the other side of this like little mini flip, so hopefully that runs through Nahat as well. Is that, you know, they're already starting to see the peak.
Yeah, I. I hope so, but um the CDC reported yesterday was not good. Uh three counties, including Middlesex and Suffolk, both contiguous to us, are now yellow, which means there's moderate number of cases. Uh and two people died in those counties. Uh there's a third county which you can't remember, because it wasn't near us, but there are three counties in the state now that are yellow. Uh but it could be, you know, coming down.
On the bright side, you know, the bad side is the increased transmissibility with each of the variants that have been coming out lately. You know, in a way, that's a bad thing, it transmits so quickly and so easily. On the bright side, though, it happens so quickly, the student was just saying that the case numbers do tend to drop faster, because it. It's already kind of washed through relatively quickly, uh so hopefully that'll that'll prove to be true. I think your point is a valid one, that, you know, let's not forget the other risks, you know, influenza carries significant risk as well. Uh and so making sure that people really are vigilant. I know with just what you were saying, people are testing for COVID, which is important, but A, the tests aren't perfect. And B, other viruses that can be, you know, quite problematic and dangerous also exist, so. It sounds like good information to keep on spreading. And then hopefully, and another interesting thing is that, you know, since our cases seem to peak almost at the beginning of vacation. It's almost like it was happening before vacation, you know, that this was happening before vacation, as opposed to a problem with vacation.
Yeah.
Just anecdotes.
Madam Chair, I have one more thing that may be helpful to individuals. Um. There is a governmental process that went into effect during vacation. If um anyone would text. Uh and in the message bar, type your zip code. There's a system in place that sends you all of the uh vaccine availability in your immediate area. And you can then call them and make an appointment, it saves lots of time online. And I tried it. And there's all of the places that they sent me with the phone number and the addresses. And um I'll be contacting them to get my second booster.
That would save us all hours.
Yeah, see, that's impressive, maybe that's the best.
That's right. What it, what it saves is going through, you hit the bottom, and nothing's available. Which we've all done. So uh and then I do know that there is a Swan Scott. Um vaccine clinic Mondays, four to six. And I apologize, I can't bring back where it is.
I saw one in Lynn on Wednesday as well.
Yeah, and then and then the Middlesex County Community College has one also. So. I think by the time the pandemic is over, we'll have this down to a science. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alright, so we'll move on to all business, um starting with the preschool finances.
Thank you, Madam Chair, well, I have good news. On April seventh, I reported to you that uh we had um thirty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars uh of unpaid. On April seventh, I reported to you that uh we had um thirty-two thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars uh of unpaid preschool bills. As of today. We have fifteen thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars, so it's been cut by more than half. And um it's the same month, so it's not a question of um. You know, it's. A month's bills went out in April, you know, in March, and we didn't account for them, it's in the same month. Uh, everyone, I, if if you remember last time I told you, there were six families that owed about eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, every one of those families, with the exception of one, has made a significant payment. Uh, unfortunately, one has not, and we're having some difficulty getting response. Uh, I do want you to know that uh Mr. Andrews will be calling that parent guardian to tell them unless some uh good faith payment is made. Uh, towards the almost third, three thousand nine hundred dollars that's outstanding. Uh, the child will not be accepted into the preschool program as of Monday. Uh. I I hate to do that, but um this individual has, this parent guardian has not paid uh any money uh this year. You know, since the beginning of the year. So, uh, but overall, it's great news.
Can you tell me that?
Uh, fifteen thousand seven twenty-seven. As compared to thirty-two, three, sixty-five.
How do you get to into the year? That has, have you been able to talk to the parent?
We've already um, we've been in touch with email. And that's been our primary, and that's, that's been effective with the ones that you talked to.
I'm in this one job and it's.
Oh, yeah, no, we haven't, we haven't. No contact, no contact.
But they do, they're.
They've been, their attend, their attendance hasn't been um excellent.
Okay.
And I'm wondering um if they're responding to our, yeah, message by not having to commit.
It is a significant amount of money, though, you know, it's not.
Oh, yes.
It's not a couple of weeks or a month.
Right, no, and they are aware of it, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll, as I said last time, we will work with the parent guardian, if they explain it to us, we'll make sure that.
Yeah.
The child can continue to come because obviously people need to go to work in order to make money so they can pay the bills. So we're reasonable about it, but uh.
No, it sounds like you've been a good faith effort, I think sometimes, you know, pride, language, there are lots of things that can get in the way, but. At the end of the day, we've got to communicate, we're going to use it somehow.
Mm-hmm, right.
And if you're assured that it's not a language issue, which is going to be seen, but.
No, it's, that's true.
Um, then, you know, I also wanna be careful when putting the attendance up there in that position, so I'm just, I was just.
Yeah.
But it, I know, you've been really there.
And then, uh, Madam Chair, the last item, A B, is in, uh, excuse me, I'm in the wrong place. Uh, the summer and after-school activities. We have uh thirty-one students signed up for our summer program in July. Um, in the mornings, Monday through Thursday. Unfortunately, uh Island Roots has determined that they are not running the afternoon program. So, um, that was a disappointment to to us. But obviously, it's their decision and we uh. Will do, we'll see what we can do uh next year to make sure that uh parents get the information in a timely manner. And um that we have no students to run it be, because it is, it is a real service to parents who need to work all summer, obviously. To have their students uh come to our program in the morning and then IR groups in the afternoon.
Does that affect the enrollment of the summer program?
No.
Oh, that's right. I don't know how possible it is, but if the summer program could be organized and advertised as early as like December. Now, that sounds crazy early, but that's when I booked all my camps and then I, you know, and then, cause a lot of them, you have to book that early.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so then if you're committing that early, then your kids are already committed and not available for this.
Yeah.
Um, that sounds a little crazy to be booking summer in December, but as you, as the parents here know, that, that happens.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, Madam Chair, if I may say, I believe that, you know, last year was our first year having funds to run a summer camp.
Yeah.
And we're, you know, this year, we made a push hard to get it out early.
Yeah.
Which was February for us.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but I I take your point, and I think it's a good one.
And it is earlier, it's great, you did a great job.
No, but you're right, it's.
It's just crazy how early it has to be for some of them.
Yeah, right. We'll get on it tomorrow for next summer, yeah.
And I hope just the uh, the cost, the cost was a little confusing. And it was very confusing, so I think if that's more.
Could you explain the the confusion of that part?
Um, it was, it was like in a chart. And it was confusing that for like this, this week, you're paying this amount. And then, but if you're also doing the morning, then you're paying this amount and this amount, so it just seemed like a lot of money. Um, if you were to not read it correctly.
Okay.
Uh.
Okay.
I think people misunderstood that the amount for the full day camp kind of been the amount, like it was just very confusing.
Thank you. Oh. Oh, the first week.
So, but when, when Island Roots ran the full day camp.
The first week.
Like, I almost wonder, is that just advertised separately in some way, I don't even know.
Yeah.
But for somebody who comes to these meetings and has a basic understanding of what the proposal was, it was really hard for me to understand what was being asked. And the signup being separate, which I I almost wonder if when you sign up for the um Johnson School Camp. If in that, there could be a link to also extend the day and sign up.
Hmm.
Like, I know that I signed up for the Johnson School and would have signed, I signed up my case for Island Roots, but I didn't realize that I had to do that part separately. So I think that that might contribute to some, and I know that after the fact, you sent out a message asking people if they also wanted to sign up, but um.
By then.
Yeah, I don't know.
Maybe even just right of that, like, here's the Johnson School Camp, and then extend the day while Island Roots is.
Right, right.
Maybe more of a merged uh system.
Yeah.
If you could have some completely non-involved parents look at it before you send it out to make sure that they understand it, that.
Or even as involved as you are.
Right.
Yeah, great, thank you, Madam Chair.
Because I I really think there are a lot that wasn't a lack of interest, it was just a lack of understanding the timeframe and what was being asked, so.
Yeah, this was our first time doing summer team with IR.
Right.
Uh, because if you remember, we signed up very late.
Yeah.
Last summer. So uh, we'll start, we are still learning, to be sure.
And I appreciate the feedback.
Absolutely.
Is the growth still, is the parent wanted to uh?
It, the uh enrollment is not close. Um, but I would appreciate if anybody who's interested would enroll very soon.
Yeah, we're sending another message out uh Friday.
Yep.
We have a few so lats left.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Uh, we can move on to new business, which is the Johnson School Improvement Plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted the members of the committee to know that the uh Johnson School School Improvement Plan will be presented to you on May twenty-fourth. And uh Chair A B, I thought it was kind of interesting for you to see uh the Marblehead Swanscott and the hot calendars. Oh, and what I did is I did an analysis of all of the days and uh. Uh, we're starting a little bit before the other schools, not dramatically so. But um, we are, our hundred and eightieth day is the fifteenth of June next year. Uh, the hundred and eighty day in Swanscott is the sixteenth of June. And Marblehead's hundred and eightieth day is the twenty-second of June. Why that's important is that we're able to get a hundred and eighty-fifth day in before the roll to the next week. So, um. And of course, we constantly wish that there's no such thing as a hundred and eighty-sixth day. Like two thousand fifteen. So I just thought that would be interesting for you.
So where is our? It's happening here, oh, we voted on that the other.
Our first day of school is the thirtieth of August.
Okay.
If you see Marblehead, they don't start till.
Yeah, after Labor Day.
After Labor Day.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy that it's starting set because, you know, PS Ed didn't, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
It's also really nice that you kind of ease into it, you know, the week and then another short week for everybody.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, in the agrarian society, waiting until September made sense, but you were harvesting.
Right.
I don't think we harvest much on the island.
Yeah, find more at the school than at home.
Right.
Thanks for seeing Andrew. Um, any other committee business?
I would like to announce, uh, for most of us here now, this is where it last meeting. After five years, and I want to thank you. And I want to say that it's been pretty impressive watching you, you know, on the school committee over these last few years and done an amazing job and really inspired me to be involved, so. Um, thank you for your service to the town.
Thank you, it's been an honor to serve in the school committee, it's been an honor to work with all of you and certainly with the administration. Um, exceptional times that we have been together. Um, but I'm really proud of the work that's been done and really appreciate it, everyone who's made it here, so thank you very much and thanks for letting people pray back. Thank you all for all the work you're doing and continuing this good work.
Any other announcements from the committee? Um, there's no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn our uh regular meeting uh to enter into executive session. Not to reconvene into open session. Look down line, that makes sense.
I'll make the motion if you don't mind, um, to adjourn our regular meeting at eight oh three P M. To enter into executive session, not to reconvene into open session. The purpose of approval of executive session minutes, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with the union personnel and to get even beat and to discuss deployment of security devices. In a second.
All our faithful, to your view, say hi. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.